And we added a sign in sheet over here if you guys didn't see it. Yeah, you know, I don't know if I should have put it in there.
Well, we should have.
You can do something with the oval, right? Hope you guys.
Yeah, yeah, we've signed it in touch a while, I guess.
I believe they are on the state, as those companies, the web and the state website.
Yeah.
To my knowledge. And Joel is going to be here.
Yeah.
You want me to wait a few minutes? Well, we got another person. We could give him a break.
Okay, he has the first two items. We could take them out of order.
We could do that. While with the meeting, please come to order. Um, we're gonna do the whole call, which we've done. And then we're gonna start the workshop later because Joel isn't here. So, uh, we'll can start with case 2305. Alex and Jamie Bowens.
I'm here. I just want to point out that if you have questions with this applicant, they they do not intend to come until seven because that's from the regular
Oh, I didn't know.
Start. So if you wanted to take a different workshop, I would put them over. Unless you have my questions, Joel.
Yeah.
Regarding the housing.
Yeah.
One of my members.
So the first you called Joel, the man is Joel. Yep. So, um, if you want, I could start talking about the LD 2003.
Yeah.
And then when Joel arrives. Okay. Okay, so the state has enacted legislation, legislation. And the intent is to increase housing opportunities in the state domain. And these are changes to the zoning ordinance that are required by the state. Normally, under home rule, you won't make up your own zoning. And if the state doesn't include you from doing something, then you have to know how to do it. In this instance, the state is saying you need to make these changes. And if they're not saying exactly what that language is, because every community's ordinances are a little bit different. So our job is to make sure that the ordinance changes happen and that it's consistent with what the state wants. So there's three pieces to what the state has come up with that we need to implement. Hey. Do you want me to continue or do you wanna?
Joel, you need a few minutes to get yourself ready.
Joel, I mean, I'm just gonna.
You could sit there, actually, that seems.
Yeah, is that all right?
Take your breath.
I forget you have this thing called traffic running around this area. I'm not used to.
So just give you the quick rundown of what the three areas are. So tonight, I'm going to present to you what types of changes are going to need to be made. And there's three questions that I'm going to have for you to think about between our workshop tonight and the next meeting, I'm going to bring to the actual language inserted into the ordinance, so that the text, you know, struck out and underlined that you will need to review to make sure that it does what it's intended to do. And no matter how many eyes look at it, there's always the possibility of unintended consequences, but we're going to do our best on the first time around. So the three different pieces, one has to do with an affordable housing density bonus. So the incentive is for developers to come in and create more affordable housing. Um, when they do a development, the majority of it falls under the definitions of affordable. And there's different ones for rental, different ones for ownership, and these are dictated by the state. Then they will have the ability to have up to two and a half times what the current density allowance is. So the density allows for 10 units. And they meet all the requirements under the important housing definitions in that they could potentially have 25 units. So it's a big incentive. So we need to look at zoning language, running to district, and see how that might fit in there. The second piece has to do with density. And so right now, you have certain land area per unit, certain land area per lot. Creating a lot. And then on that lot, you have certain land area for each unit going in that it's you're going to construct. So that language is going to address making that more flexible and increasing the ability of someone, not a subdivision, not a developer, but on your individual lots to add more units. Yes. Oh, we did this before. Yes.
That's what.
We're hearing your pain, folks. Even if you're not hearing your pain.
It's sort of, I almost forget about it after a while, but why can't I hear anything?
It's like a white noise effect.
It is, yeah.
He found it. And the lights are still on.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
It did.
We got it.
I just have a blue and can't lose the gaze.
So the second piece that we'll look at in summary is looking at more units on a lot that isn't dividing the lot for me as a subdivision. And then the third piece we'll look at is has to do with accessory dwelling units. And right now, you can have an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, but the density standard or parking standard applies to that. The state is now saying wherever you allow single family residential, you need to allow an accessory dwelling unit. So I can go over that in more detail, but that's the prospect of those three categories.
So that would be on a hidden secret lot.
Yes.
It's big enough.
Well, no, they are now deemed to be big enough. So regardless of the lot size.
Well, shoreline.
Shoreland's different, and you have to make sure that you still have, you know, sewer and water septic, whichever district that you're in. You do have to meet those requirements sanitary.
All three of these require.
Amendments to.
Sewer.
Yes, yes, absolutely. I'm sorry, not public sewer necessarily. They have to have a septic system that's adequate or sewer.
Yeah, okay. Same on water, you could have a lot. Basically, you could do this anywhere.
Yes.
Or you can put in a septic system.
Yes.
So you have to be able to increase the septic system.
Yes.
Because of the size. So if it doesn't fit, then it's not doable.
That would be a limiting factor if you have so many bedrooms and you want to add, say, one bedroom, two bedrooms, whatever that unit you're desiring, if you can't um, have the design of a septic that would maybe have capacity for all the bedrooms, then that would be a limiting factor. So you may not be able to. They're getting smaller and smaller in area. But that is definitely, that would be taken into consideration.
Just, just a point of clarification for the first one. You mentioned specifically, you know, affordable housing, and they can go 2.5 times the density. We were talking about shrinking for cluster development, shrinking the lot size. Are we going to be, okay, if we shrink that, let's say, 5,000 square feet that's needed, now do we use this magic multiplier on top of that? And they can go two and a half times that? Or did you understand?
I do.
Concerned, it's, it's sort of a balance of the two. If it states allows 2.5 times the top, the size, we may want to go to 12 and a half thousand, 12,500 square feet. So that when they do the two and a half times, they get down to 5,000, which is where we're going anyways. Cluster development has to have city, water, and sewer. So that's not, that's not, you know, the lot size there is not as important.
So the accessory dwelling unit doesn't consider lot size. But the other provisions do. It doesn't.
Okay.
It doesn't go around subdivision. You still have to go through that process. And, and I apologize because I don't know the ordinance well enough. You do have a cluster provision. Is there a density bonus already in the ordinance for clustering? So that's.
Well, they do get to do smaller. They can do a 20,000 square foot lot. So they're allowed to do a smaller lot than a regular building lot.
Yeah.
But we were talking about shrinking that even more. I just want to make sure we don't shrink it and then multiply it down, so they get to shrink it a lot more. I want to make sure we know what that math is before we, if we're going to go down that road and continue to change that, we just want to make sure we we understand that it's involved. If they want to have that as a multiplier, that's fine. But that'll help us determine what we want for a lot size, knowing what a density. Because we don't want to end up with, you know, 5,000, 100 square foot being a lot. That would be kind of crazy.
So I, I hear, I believe I understand the question, but when we talk about it more after we talk with Joel, I'll probably ask you a few more questions to see if I can answer everything, and if not, make sure that I, you know, get the answers and incorporate it into how that language works. So I believe I understand you, but I'm going to reserve the right to be wrong to the top later.
No worries. Yeah.
Okay, well, Joel is, is time now, and who do you guys stop with, Joel?
Well, I mean, yeah, we're talking about the, um, the minimal extraction ordinance on that script, so that's the one that I wanted to get started with. We had, I mean, there's obviously been some public feedback, um, there's a few questions that have some sort of parts we're concerned. Uh, I think Jamie is, has some specific comments on the, on the edit book, well, the the version that I shared that everyone could comment on. I just wanted to, I suppose that unless anyone has any other concerns, is just to move through it article by article and see if there's any changes that we might want to make.
Daniel will be here, but it's going to be late.
But we've got, yeah, we've got other comments on the.
I responded to some of her comments.
Okay, you own that too. Yeah, yeah, okay. Fantastic.
I'd just like to know, um, I received comments this afternoon, so you haven't seen them yet from the public. So the board was, was communicating directly, and I do have comments from the public. You received hard copies of ones that came in, but I did receive some today. So for future discussions, I'll make sure you get those.
Is there a comment period end date? Or was this the two weeks that comments were supposed to be made?
I'm sorry.
I had comments trickling in as.
That would. Get turned on, yeah.
I'll get close to this. I had comments coming in as late as this afternoon. So I didn't know if there was an end date for the comment period from the public or if it's, if that's, that's been decided yet, so.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, all right.
So we'll see if we can find out.
I don't want it to go on forever.
No, I mean, procedural is just to make sure, I'm not sure I'm 100% right, but we basically would make changes, final draft, and submit that draft to the town select board. I mean, and then they would, the town council, they would then have a meeting, they have to have two readings, right? So they'd have the first one, and then they have to have a public comment period. So there's going to be a second chance for comments. We just, I think it's best to get as many comments as we can. We said, why wait? If we can get them now, but the public will have a second chance when, when the town council has it.
Because I think that's what was agreed upon when this was first brought up, first time you were here, that the, the public had the ability to comment.
Right.
But I didn't know if it was a, you know, an end date to the exception of the comments that you can review.
I mean, if we got through all our comments and get to the public comments and feel like we can adopt their address, that we want to be able to move it to the town council. But there will be another public portion when that happens.
So again, I, I just wanted to make sure that it was clarified on that. Today I submitted the, the template that Joel hasn't seen yet. But we had six to 10 people made comments on the template. But as I was telling somebody earlier on, we, we removed a lot of the items to make it a little bit easier for for, for the, for the planning board to digest this, this 32 pages of information. But we also added some items on there. So again, I want to make sure that that's not lost in the shuffle here. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
What are you saying, Zivers? You rewritten the ordinance?
No. You said you took stuff out.
So, so what we did is we took Joel's template and, and we looked at how it applies. Because again, I think the template is a, is a.
I think the batter on that is.
Is probably fading, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think this picks up the voice. I, I think the template, correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, it's, it's a, it's a conglomeration of different ordinances that you pick here and there, right? To make, make a standard template.
Yeah, yeah, I've looked at what's been made before. I've looked at what, um, you know, I've added it. I've amended it all together and then looked at what was hopefully covering all the initial concerns that I was made aware of when I was tasked to do this and then um, yeah, put together as a, as a draft.
So there, there are some paragraphs that seem to be redundant. And so, and so we removed those just for the sake of brevity to the, to the application itself.
See what you did.
Yeah, hopefully you were able to open it, but it's in Google Docs, and I'm not a Google Docs person. I'm a, I'm a OneDrive person, so.
So we'll see the original and what you're saying.
You, you got it, yeah. We, we highlighted what we would like to see deleted or changed or added or whatever. But again, I, I think it's just kind of, you know, gives you a, a jumping off point. And I wanted to make sure that that wasn't lost in the, in the proceedings. We had about 10 people working on this, so it took, took a little bit of time, unfortunately, so.
Make sure it doesn't.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Don, you've got that.
I have that, and I can forward that. I'm so sorry. I do have that, and I can forward that to you in that digital format. And then again, the other ones were much shorter comments, and you do, do have.
Yeah.
So with that in mind, I mean, I guess I'll take a strip from the prior稿 about what folks, I mean, you guys want to see there. Um, obviously, you can take whatever you receive and say, that's fine, we'll do that, and we can do that. But obviously, it's your, your guys to see it at this stage. Um, so as we work through it, if we just go through apple one, um, has anyone got any good comments? We had one, we had one comment from Jamie about maybe adding in protecting the air quality um, under section two E. Um, anyone else have any other thoughts about apple one specifically, and then I want to make a lot of changes?
Yeah, I did. Um, on, on section two B, is there, it's, you know, preserving the value of property seems incredibly subjective. So how, is there a metric that the state uses? Is there anything out there to say? I mean, Mark, you look at places, the houses now versus a year and a half ago, it wouldn't matter. Everybody's house wouldn't, right? It, it, so how do you, how do you evaluate that based on, you know, preserve, especially when it says preserving the value of property? How is that?
I think, I mean, it's. That's the term I got. Um, and I think in this sense, it's just, in general term, um, where it's, uh, this, this is in theory, the preserve of the value of property. It's something, you know, showing up next door, which might generally speaking, be thought to devalue property. There's been, you know, there's, I've come across several ways that regulations have tried to do that by asking for, you know, specific real estate um, kind of reviews at various times, but again, it's all subjective in that sense. Um, so if that's something that's probably going to open up too many questions, then we might want to consider removing it. I think the, the idea was that it could generally speak to the concept that if you regulate what can go, um, you know, what kind of operations can, can happen about in other properties, then that might generally speaking, just kind of relate to a value of property. But I don't really get into the specifics of approving that. So that's, I mean, it is a good, a good point to bring up. So I guess I'll just take, you know, the consensus about whether or not you keep that in or take it as a general purpose at this stage.
I'm here. I, I don't know if it would be helpful or more confusing, but we have the projector to project the language up or I don't want to make it.
Certainly, certainly, it is.
An option in case that was helpful before.
I think it's a good idea.
I was gonna go through section.
That's what we're starting.
That is, I was hoping to do, if anything else, I would get.
Would help.
Yeah, and I, I don't have any problem leaving in section B. I don't, I, I mean, we have that in our conditional use permit, you know, kind of like a general statement, what is it, like number 13 or 14? It kind of says, you know, the protecting the neighbors and the neighborhood. So I'm fine. I just, I just wanted to know if there was a metric, because it may stop some of the confusion and, and the, the, you know, landowners coming and saying, it's going to devalue my property. Somebody will say, it's going to increase the value of your property. You know, that whole discussion that happens.
Yeah, I agree. And what, what usually happens is, um, someone could look at one study that they say, oh, it increased my back home values in the area by X. The developer quite easily, what was the second one that said it would affect some of the time. It's going to work as a discussion, but I think it will probably.
Well, I probably have to slide back.
Other than that, yeah.
Go ahead, follow that.
So it was section two, point B, we were just talking about that. Whether we thought, just as the general purpose that, um, preserving the value of property should be left in that in a general sense. Again, I don't think this, this ordinance would, would get into that thing where we asked for, I have seen it before, but it was asked for a report about how it might affect, um, potentially affect the real estate market, but again, that's all purely subjective. We can get the courts and say one thing, the courts and say other stuff, we're always doing it. So what do you think? I mean, I'd say the other part there is E, I think, um, Jamie added the comment about just adding air quality specifically on the E for, um, rather than just C. Quality, also adding air quality. So to me, same reasonable reasons, it's for this kind of land use, it seems, uh, seems like it's, it is related to air quality as well.
And then I think we go into this, a lot of the things that would affect property value, we've got covered. You know, if they were to dig a big hole and leave it, that would affect your property value. That's covered. The waste is covered, dust is covered.
Right.
So those are things I would think would affect the property value if they were allowed to have it, so. Perhaps we've already got it in there.
Well, the purpose is kind of just a summary anyways.
Yeah.
So let's just try to be overdue.
So basically, as in, you know, just relate to the general sense, which hopefully, let's say, all the all the standards and requirements that we are going forward, generally talk to the preservation of property values. So I did. And for A, do we, do we want to add something specifically about air quality? As Jamie suggested.
Excuse me?
For, for, that's for two E, there is this protecting the scenic quality of your wind room. And Jamie suggested we add the air quality here as well as, um, seeing it. Because, you know, there can be, you know, some of these issues, it's definitely can affect air quality.
I don't think so.
You can. I mean, it is somewhat nebulous, but it's, it's, it's environments and its residents. So you're protecting its residents, that would be air quality. And we could put that in a later provision if we wanted to, but we could, we could explicitly say that here if if we wanted to make sure that was covered.
But, but does it cover if we just say air quality? Air quality, okay.
Oh, right. If you say air quality, that's great, but what are you going to do for monitoring? Are you going to check that? What's your, what's your reporting schedule? Who gets those reports? And all those other.
Put it there and then add the rest of it later. Is that?
Yeah. And the state, yeah, the state has some provisions already in there.
That's fine.
So we might get a draw on there.
Put it there and we'll pick it up. We can pick it up to say how we can do it. Because it's not good, any good saying that if we don't say how we're going to do it.
Yeah.
Show it.
This is kind of a summary. If you've got it in there, it will remind us that everyone.
We got to have it later.
Yeah.
So just protecting the air and scenic quality of wind room. That's fine. You just added it right there, Joel.
So, you know, and it'd be covered under admire.
It, it is, but just if, if we want to highlight it a little bit, I guess. I think you did about it.
So next section is actually part of just the capability of this ordinance. We have a few comments there. Um, regarding existing operations, it's geographic, should be existing operations. There may be some time where I'm following certain things in, for example, maybe a size of an existing site which could prevent them from further operating. So I mean, that's just getting to the fact that this ordinance is applicable to existing operations. And that, and that affects them operating going forward. As opposed to, you know, if they're already operating, then they're just like the grandfather, they don't have to be any of the status.
But I thought we had the discussion, there are no active mining in Winthrop. So who would be, yeah, who would be grandfathered in? Nobody. And if the site can discontinue for 24 months, it's no longer permanent by the state. So it has to be started over, so it'd be new.
I think I'd like to confirm that.
And then that came, that came from Mark. So you checked with him, absolutely. That's a good thing to check on, but.
To your knowledge, we don't have.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that Mark said we did not.
Yeah, I mean, it, it says, is the maintenance existing under, under certain, you know, level?
But that's not, that's not existing. Because it was, when, if, when, if basically our ordinance said if after 24 months, they haven't operated, it's now needs a new permit. Yeah. So they still have a valid state permit, but they do not have a valid with the town of Winthrop permit. So we have, we did formulate that, we can be pretty sure 100%. That's where I said, I don't think we have any operations, because that was the only one. And it's never been active again since, and it had 24 months of no operation, which according to Mark meant that it's no longer valid, even though they have a valid state permit.
Aren't, aren't people allowed under a certain size to have a travel?
There's, there's provisions in there. I actually messed with a little.
But if there's a little one in Winthrop somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah.
They'd have to, they'd have to come back and get approval to expand it, right?
It, it, as soon as you cross whatever threshold, right now it's, it's one acre, I was, I was proposing we shrink that. Um, yeah, so, uh, cause I thought that was, that's still a fairly good side hole.
So, okay, so, so anyone here is more or less a go. So is it just, is it what even end of standard, or is it? Or do you think it's not a full?
Same good as it is.
Okay, that's a nurse. I guess, I guess, yeah, it's a corporal, it's, yeah.
Somebody with a small operation wants to. enlarge it and says, well, I didn't need a permit, and it doesn't say anything about existing, so.
Okay, yeah, so here, um. Section C, minimal extraction operations, less than one acre, are allowed, is permitted use for planning by applicable. Following zones, so we have comments there saying. Suggestion, do you submit down to a court, America? And just remove the commercial zone.
Yeah.
Makes sense thinking of whether.
Yeah, I, I looked at the commercial zone on the zoning maps and said, it doesn't really make sense, you don't wanna have a craft pit there.
The commercial does, especially if you found a complete over that, uh, over towards the corridor and all that, so. Does it mean that does?
Right.
Co- comment on that, the only. The only zone that we currently allow no extraction of rural zone anyway. So, uh, I would. I would suggest that we. Basically remove. All of those zones other than references only to rural zones.
Yeah, rural zone also matches the, the, the land use zones, like, for example.
And, you know, if, if further discussion brings to light that we might wanna consider some other zone. We've been easily added back in. Right now, consistent with our current ordinance. Which is very general, uh, minimal extraction, but it does say.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be consistent.
Well, yeah.
Change that for a little, um. What do we think about, um? The. One acre versus court, I think, um. Or maybe use.
Yeah, we're in the, we're in the one acre, I mean, if we're in the rural zone, I think one acre is fine.
Yeah, that does, that does make a difference.
Yeah. Yeah, in the commercial and industrial, but. And is the next sentence repetitive? Cause it's exactly the same thing now.
Exactly, if we, if we just let our first one go, and the other one is, so we get going on that.
Okay.
So we leave it as one acre. This will be, let's just.
Yeah.
Reinforcements.
We're just, we're just working out, like, through the ordinance, section by second, we've already got a lot of comments on the.
Okay.
He said, what we're gonna, we haven't done before, so. Again, the next, so the next one down, it will, I mean, that's also, um. We're done with this, uh. Not, I can talk about it, and, and, just goes on.
Right. Wanna actually list out the different zones in, in third paragraph?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, yeah, it goes without saying, if you want to allow. Level, it may have been in all the others, but. We wanna be roughly, I think.
I know, I just worry if we change the zones or add a new zone, then all of a sudden you'd be. Kind of left a nebulous land.
Good point, I mean, we could probably just tighten that up and say, uh, if it, in all.
All others.
Of the zones.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I was thinking, just that would cover us, it's only permitted rural. That just clarifies it, so nobody gets any ideas.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was just my note in terms of making it possible, considering that the, uh. Taylor uses in the land use zones, I think we've just done with that. We just, so. I don't have to worry about that.
Is that something you guys just talked about, was one acre?
Yeah, because seemingly because it's probably gonna be allowed in the rural zone, um, one acre was considered.
I propose making it smaller and letting rural be bigger. Being if we left it in the industrial zone, I suggested removing commercial, and suggested removing from industrial, so rural's the only zone we're allowing it.
Which tallies with the general land use.
Yeah, industrial's not very big.
Right.
So, and, and commercial, that, I don't think it belongs, so. We thought that's where I think we're landing with rural only.
And only an acre? Is that what that reads?
Well, if it's, if it is an acre, then it has to come to the planning board.
Gotcha.
Permission.
Gotcha, okay, okay, okay.
Okay, I'm dropped for three, hey? Must anyone go in? Fellas brought for two. Yeah, you know, so I'm sorry, written comments on reality.
Horrible vision.
But Jamie just revealed that there's been. Um, uh, and, uh, someone is. Being edited in efforts, you mean? Their own set of comments on this draft ordinance, which has only just been submitted, so you can focus at some point, we'll have to review that. See if you agree with some of those, just, I think they've done a lot of good. Seems like they've done a lot of good work, just checking that, but this is then, we'll have to do that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, so exemptions, um. Nobody had any specific notes here, unless there's one scratch now.
Joel, you're very high down Stan, can you tell me what section you're in?
Sorry, I forget, um, you have, you have, um, I mistake, article three. Exemptions, um, the audience should not apply to the following. A to F. So at this stage, it says, less than five thousand square feet of surface area, or two hundred cubic yards of material. You know, mineral exploration is just, you know, um, determination. Mineral resources, see if I tested things, um. Storage of stockpiles of sand. Um. Removal or material into that construction, obviously. Uh, found in fire burns, uh, waste management plants, um. Inactive areas where previous dining had lasted over twelve months prior to the shutdown was hard question. Which twelve months was, like, say, you already used sunset for town committee anyway?
Yeah, the town, the town for twenty-four months.
So. We want to, we want to change that into twenty-five months, so that's in mind of that.
We can, and we manage. Yeah, cause otherwise it could get confusing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, let's turn to the other.
Okay.
Twenty-four months.
Yeah, just. Any other thoughts on the, on the building section? Five thousand square feet and, you know, as it seems like a meaningful.
Well, as long as, I just wanna make sure we're not doing something wrong here. I mean, D is removal or filling material incidental to construction, so if they're digging a foundation, cause I'm just reading B going. Well, a foundation could be a lot bigger than two hundred yards. And as long as that D is, they're covered, I don't, I don't want them to be middle extraction, if they're digging all over a foundation.
That's not, yeah, that's what we're trying to avoid, is, you know.
So.
I mean, you know, some incentive applies.
It doesn't, but I just, you know, I, as long as D is covered, as that's, that's incidental to construction, which I'm assuming, I just wanted to point that out. That if you just read B alone, it kind of jumps out at you being like, geez.
Yeah.
Not a lot of dirt, but.
Well, I mean, I think the, the qualify there is it. It has to meet the definition of mineral extrac- extraction operations as well.
Yeah.
As defined.
Yes.
Okay, um, that case, I'll move on to that, for fall application. This will be, you know, this is kind of administrative, and maybe at some point, um. You know, the, the town staff, right? Just wanna look at this, this is, this has been in terms of what's required, and so to get, the application. Although, I know it's that we now are talking about the state's, which is, is just to another, so it's section two.
Right.
That probably needs to be. Remanded, um. The expansion, section two, expansion of the district operations. We need no distinction between zones, that are every, so, all right? Yeah. But the, the man is second choose, and section A is to make no reference to differences with the zones, he's wearing, we're talking about. They were formed on January, again, one time. There we have, so application requirements, again, this is, um, you know, what we were about to be sent in, um. That was just, as the fuller company just said, I had to read, you said, it's getting much. Seems fine to me, uh, doesn't quite. I think that's stipulation.
Yeah, that seemed fine. I was Jamie's thought.
I mean. Maybe that's, I mean, ten might actually seem like a lot these days. Cause we usually, most of the time, we've narrowed it down to. Three or four, and then as long as it's not digital.
For me, it would be important to know that there was some flexibility, because then I can work with an applicant. Otherwise, if it's like the zoning works, that's shallow.
Yeah.
Then they'll have to submit all that, um, ten seems a little excessive, so you can, you know, bend with application to application, depending.
Um, okay, so you just wanna make that a little more flexible?
Do you wanna say at least four?
Definitely, yeah.
And then you could, you could require more, but at least four.
Okay.
That seems more reasonable, and that's, yeah, that's, that's, that's just set the minimum. Believe when they come here, we can share it.
Sometimes when you give, they give you like a little eight by eleven and a half map, and you're like, oh.
It's simply best. Tell me, request additional copies as needed, folks, I'm gonna follow. Follow. Oh, so, and do you wanna, um, specify size, size of that?
Go like architectural D?
Well, I thought we.
Did we put aside something like? I thought I saw.
Driving, you know.
Excellent.
Twenty-four by thirty-six is.
Yes, that's architectural D.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah, we checked.
Okay, after, um, I'm going more. Play into the draw.
Maybe by a site plan prepared by a licensed surveyor.
Talking about the depth of groundwater on the site line requirements, section five, B. Um, this is what's, the site, you know, talking about what information can be shown on the site line. Um, patient of existing both groundwater and monitoring wells. As well as, as well as the depth of the groundwater. Being acceptable, then we would like the operator.
I say yes, but they're wrong.
I, 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 I don't know.
I think it's good. That was a big question we had before, so.
Yeah, just the location of the monitoring wells, so that we can determine. Uh, underground services, make that.
Good job, Frank.
I knew you. If you didn't, I'm just gonna bring it up. That was.
Well, yeah, if you're gonna do minimal expression, you go with test well.
Prior to.
I sure would. I mean, if the water, groundwater's six feet down, you're going, oh, I'm screwed, or I can't dig anything, and then you test pits, they do everything. Yeah.
Wasn't there a part of this that said something like, no work's allowed to be done until the permit's approved?
Well, that's in our ordinance, I mean, you're not allowed, you're not allowed to do it until we approve it.
Oh, I mean, yeah, we, well, we, but then earlier on, we talked about exemptions and exemptions being.
Right.
Tests.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay, that's what I was.
It's not, it's, yeah, you're not extracting, you're digging a big hole.
Okay.
You can leave, you're leaving the dirt there.
Okay.
And most of the time, you might even put it back in, but.
And Joel, where are we now?
So we're just at the, the, the bottom of five B.
Oh, thank you.
Um. We have a comment on that, saying, and we specify that we need to see the wetlands slash walkways with maintenance. Um.
Yes. I agree. That was my comment, I agree.
What was?
To Jamie's comment.
What did I say?
Specify the need to see the wetland, the waterways.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So you, you understand the scale and the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Size of this, okay?
And we can add that in or make it a separate, you know, bullet, but you could just add it right in. Yeah, I mean, it says exposed, you could put it up here, exposed groundwater on site, you could just add it right on there. As well as locations with all surface water. And wetland areas.
I'm like, ever twenty people watch a type. Okay, so we have a, that's. Fun. And actual comments on section six, about recognition fun. Seven, which is additional information and narratives to the, the ready plans. Detailed. I mean, a lot of this might be, um. Stuff that is site primary process, you might move it far away. So the visit comments that ends was the end, just at the top of page eight, which is. Um, subsection. Um, subsection. V. Um, what do we include in our videos for our bonds to potential damages to the neighboring wells and area of the waterfall?
Now, what was that called? Remember, what kind of bond was that?
Surety.
Yeah.
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 I don't think if we've got under the rest of the.
Yeah, that's, I mean, for mineral extraction, when they're doing digging gravel, that being obvious important, but if they were doing blasting, then I completely agree, because your chances of damaging neighboring properties are much, much higher.
Yeah.
Or if you're just digging a hole.
Right.
It's not really as likely, but yeah.
You do have a general performance bound, um, statement in this, but not one specifically that relates to, um, you know, potential damage to neighboring. Water sources.
So properties adjacent to development is what we're talking about.
Right.
Within that.
Yeah, some of the towns, some of the towns have, if we looked at it the first time, we did when they were doing blasting. And I'm, I don't know if the state allowed it, but some, there are towns that have provisions in there that, you know, you're supposed to do pre-inspection of the houses, post-inspection, you're supposed to have a bond, so that if you're damaged foundations, things like that, you have money to pay for those damages, you don't just be like, oh, I'm done, I'm out. So, um, I'm not sure of the legal side, but.
I'll look, I know some towns have blasting ordinances, so I'll take a look and see.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure Augusta has one.
And I forgot what was the distance. There was some sort of distance that was required for neighboring property.
I almost think the state was like a half mile or something, if we were pushing it to a mile.
Yeah.
Or even more. Um, because you can have damage, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Couple miles away, depending on the size.
Mm-hmm.
And the fracture connection to your house. So. You know, what is that distance? It's tough.
It's gotta be on one of the old maps, I think, where it said everywhere that were required in that one. It's gotta be somewhere.
Do you want to put a place hold on that and just check that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should see what the provisions are, that just, you know, because this will cover, this will cover blasting too, so.
Yeah, I think it needs to go someplace a bit different.
Yeah. Yeah.
And like you mentioned, just for blasting, not for.
Yeah, not for excavation.
Right.
And of course, you've done, even though you haven't been with a town that long yet, but does the town have provisions for managing surety bonds and other financial guarantees? Is that something that they typically do?
I'd have to look into that. I know that in general subdivision site plans, many towns, and I have experience with performance guarantee, surety, so I'll have to look and see if we have a formal process in place. In the short term, you could, with each application, add conditions um, to, you know, to particular projects, but then we might want to look across the board and see if that provision you want included was not already somewhere.
I, I know we added it to the solar ordinance too, so that is important. Um, and Mark told us, you know, probably a year ago, he said, we could, the state would hold it if we don't have the ability to hold it, but he was looking into, but I don't think we got an answer of whether the town could hold it. So.
I understand legally if you can, I think it's just a question.
Yeah.
And often, you know, often the state have a, we're already having from guarantee recall. Superseded terms, but if you have special ones like this, we're going to, we're going to hard out of the center, start a new official business. Have you got, have we got a hard stop at seven for the workshop?
I don't really want to, but.
We have one, we only have one case now, right?
Mm-hmm.
All the solar stuff.
Yeah, we had a lot of cases, that's why we.
Do you want to give me a break, Joe? You expert.
No, I don't, I don't.
You do mind?
Maybe.
Well, I think maybe at seven, we could stop, pull over the case and then come back with you, because I think you're going to take longer, you got a hold of you, so we're not letting you go.
Did you finish building there? Just wells or structures or?
Oh, uh, why we added that in, uh, why this is place hold up. Oh, yeah, I assume we're talking about people's water sources specifically.
But also their foundation.
Foundation.
Their wells and foundations, so, yeah.
Brilliant, well, well. What are the best?
That's good. Okay. So. Comment is. Still on that same section, uh, I think it'd be great to talk about me, but the about, um. There you are, come on Jamie, I think you're talking about, um. Traffic.
Oh.
Entrance driveway problems.
Yeah, I felt. It, I, I felt like that was something we all needed to talk about, because.
We're requiring a traffic study.
We are.
That's what that is.
Yeah.
Traffic.
Yeah.
Understood.
Be done. It happens anyway in most, if any, after any development access is a road at any point, which obviously it's going to happen to you, whether it's a town road or a DOT road. DOT, they have to get that from the DOT. Write that information to say that they have to on town road, so.
Would that have happened with the pouring gravel pit that we were looking at? The one.
Yeah, they provided a traffic study. They don't, the traffic study doesn't have to extend beyond the local connection.
Okay.
So the, the comments of, you know, where the road connects to two O two, things like that, were outside of the scope of a traffic study.
Gotcha.
Study is the local traffic.
Okay.
And, and the way that the entrance way to design, the type of sidelines. Aggressions.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, especially if you have big trucks, you have to have a curve such that when you enter and exit, you do not leave your travel.
Yeah.
So they have to do that regardless through this.
That's, yeah, it's required, and the town requires it too. We, we require in our ordinance.
Okay.
So if they are touching a town.
Okay.
So.
Gotcha.
So, final one is that other pertinent information, which is kind of a catch-all, um, what we have to comment that we add here, which are buffer area, viewshed analysis. It comes from the entire town, um, within Mount Piska, uh, buffer zone in section seven B, we can have viewshed analysis to that section as well. So, yeah, that would, that would, um.
I feel like buffer zone maybe not quite as relevant.
But it is, it's already in seven B. Not this is standard, but yeah, it's already in there.
Well, alright, I mean, I guess.
But the viewshed analysis, we could add.
I love a viewshed analysis.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know.
Now, and I've seen a few of them, like, um, solely developments, as we're in terms of. Um, you know, address individual.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Are you guys okay with that?
So, it's well, viewshed analysis.
And what did we ask for solar? Was it from Mount Piska, or was it, where would it be visible?
Yeah, the viewshed analysis just takes the bear, rendering. You put a dot on the site.
Anywhere in the town.
Anywhere, you see that site, right?
But we want to see the entire town, not just, because I remember the one solar company just bought the small area, and we're like, no, no, no.
Like a one mile thing.
Right, we're like, no, no, everybody, everything.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was the end of, um, section two. Now, also, we have to end that, so we're, we're going in terms of the application of plans. Third, three, um. This, uh, really, not there, might be, actually, we don't, we just talked about new mineralized traction operations, um. I think really we would require the same. Application. Okay, so that's just part of, I just have to check it, that's not all of it. What is saying? Um, submission way that is, you know, outlining. Where those might be allowed or. And then again, that's just, that's a wider submission of requirements, not where there was.
Do we want the ten copies to be changed? Just highlight that and say match what we did above.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that. And. Six fifty-nine, so I'll just leave it at, so we go up to section five. You guys.
Okay, um, so now here, case twenty-three oh five, request from Adam and Jean Williams. Is anyone here representing them?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I thought you were. Um, okay. But anybody had a chance to look at?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, this is Jim King. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, um, the audio is not coming through well at all. And this is an ongoing problem. Um. If, you know, the, the microphones all have switches on them at the, at the board table that people need to use when they're speaking. And if that doesn't solve the problem, then I'm not sure what the issue is.
John, is the Zoom meeting definitely using the owl as a microphone, so we're trying to like, try and use the laptop.
Well, if you, yeah, if you're using that, that, yeah, that, that, the owl that we have, um, is is, um, not really, um. It doesn't perform at all. It's, it's really not usable. Um, it picks up about one-third of the conversation at best.
Uh, the black part? I know, this was just. Meeting, and this was discussed about upgrading the system here and in the library, because it is having flaws.
Yeah, Jim, we haven't always been turning the mics on, because if we have more than one on, we get a lot of feedback here in the room. So, sorry about that.
Okay, well. Well, we're going to have to figure out some kind of solution, because it, it makes the audio portion of the Zoom meeting really, um, unusable. And, uh. I don't know how to resolve it. I, all I'm doing, all I'm doing right now is trying to make people aware of the issue.
So. Jim is Betty, can you hear me? Jim, you there?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? I have the speaker on.
Uh, yeah. The recording, or the, the audio levels are very low. I have my headset turned up as high as it goes, and still the volume is not very adequate, but.
We'll have to look into it. I don't think anyone here has a solution. But we will, we will.
I will communicate.
Ready?
With any.
Yeah, but we'll.
Ready?
Yes.
This is Rick Dory. I agree with Jim. I, I'm sitting here listening, trying to follow him. He's a lot clearer than you all are. And it, it was difficult to follow that last exercise on Zoom. Uh, the, the audio, the audio is terrible.
That's awful.
Okay, now, uh, I could hear the, this is Jim again, and I can hear the gentleman who just spoke quite well. He's coming through loud and clear the way it should be.
They're on the phone, Zoom together, that's why.
And I could hear Jim very well, but I. I can hear Jim very well, very clear, but I cannot hear, uh, you folks very clear.
Okay, well, we're going to proceed with this case, and, um, this gentleman that's going to present to us, uh, has a microphone that hopefully will help Jim, okay?
Okay.
Would you like to present the case to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Does everybody have a copy of all?
We all, I think we all do. Because we've got so much paper, we don't know where it is, but no. We all have it.
We'd like to build on to the building that exists.
Okay.
Like these thirty percent. When, uh, all of.
Yes, we have.
I have. I have seen a question of the. Uh. Reviewing this, uh, application, um, the, uh, one area that concerned me. If I'm, if I'm reading the, uh, sketch correctly, I'm, I'm seeing some measurements from the uh, existing structure and the proposed additions, the measurements to, uh, the, I to the shoreline or to the edge of the river rap, now, I'm not sure exactly what that means, but, uh, I see some measurements of sixty-eight feet, sixty-eight feet, seventy-two feet. Uh, and then there's another further measurement of seventy-eight feet. Is, is that, uh, is that intended to convey the measurement to the high water line?
Well, because it's river rap, I didn't, I didn't really know where the high water line was. And at the bottom of the river rap, to the top of the river rap is approximately about ten feet. Okay, so what I did is I took the measure from the top of the river rap, and I figured that that was adequate for the highway.
Okay, here, here's what the problem I see with, with that, and, and again, this is where the measurements are important, because the, uh, the height of the building, uh, any closer than seventy-five feet from the shoreline, uh, is not allowed to exceed twenty feet or the existing height of the current building. Uh, I know the proposal is to build a building twenty-five feet, um, which, if any portion of that twenty-five feet is within the seventy-five foot zone, that would be, uh, uh, we would not be able to permit that, so. Um, I, I guess I would need some, some real clarification on, uh, exactly what you measurements add to the water.
I, I was just going to add for clarification, and those are elevation. Those are not distances. So the only distance on this entire map that I could find was the back rear sideline, sidelines, uh, setbacks, there was no distance measurement from the, from, from the water to the cottage. If it's drawn to scale, when I used my ruler, I came out with about seventy-five feet in the front of the building. But I don't have that on here anywhere. And the expansion, and we have to be careful, because the thirty percent expansion is on this magic hundred foot line, so you can't use the entire building unless the entire building is within the hundred foot, foot, hundred foot line, so we need to know that dimension, and it's not on here anywhere. I'm guestimating it from that number, but that is a number we need. Those numbers, those seventy-eight, seventy-two, seven, sixty-eight, sixty-eight, those are elevation. Those are not distance.
Those are, no, they are.
They are distances?
In the ground, with the patients, that are rotating to the lake on the high end of the riprap.
Well, we got a big problem then, because those distances, sixty-eight and sixty-eight makes no sense. Because one is clearly further from the water than the other one, and to be the same number is completely incorrect.
The building is at a skew, and then the property, uh, the lake goes to a skew. And I kept those, uh, pins in, so that if anybody wanted to site this, it could go down and measure the pattern.
Okay, but that is to the top of the riprap, you said?
It's the top of the riprap. And there's also, there's, there's more distance I just couldn't figure out because of elevation going down with the high water. And it's at least another, let's say, three, four feet of water down. Because it doesn't show on the riprap, with the high water line, it's so long.
Uh, well, it's, it's the responsibility of the applicant to, uh, know what the dimensions are, or the distances from the shoreline, uh, particularly in, in this situation where you've got, uh, non-conforming structure and you're doing additions, expansions on, uh, that, um, the measurement, we do have to have an accurate measurement, and particularly if it's close, if some of it's less than the seventy-five feet, that's very meaningful. If a portion of the existing structure is less than a hundred and some of it greater than a hundred, that's also, uh, important in how we calculate the percentage of expansion, so, um, without, uh, without accurate measurements for that, we're, we're sort of stuck. We don't know exactly what we can approve and what we can, unfortunately, so.
I have a question for you. So if you want me to go to the water, it's, it's something. Because there's not a mechanical high water warranty.
Well, uh, the, the, the ordinance and, and the state law, uh, specifies uh, measurement to the high water line. Now, I, I can't from here tell you how to determine where the high water line is. Uh, certainly, top of the riprap would, you know, unlikely that it's gonna be above that, but that isn't necessarily the high water line. So I, I can't tell you, uh, where the high water line is. At this point, you can sort of tell better in the spring, I guess typically, but, uh, I know a lot of lakes, they, this time of year, they draw them down, so the water level today may not be the high water line, in fact, unlikely that it would be. Um, and, uh, this on up in arrows, uh, yeah, I'm not sure if they draw that one down that way. So it may not vary a lot up there, but, um, you know, we, we can't, we can't sit there and determine where the high water line is. That's, that really, uh, needs to be part of the application, particularly where you're working with, you know, kind of close distances to a couple of very significant numbers, the hundred-foot and the seventy-five feet, because they're both very critical for how much you can expand where, and then also for the height, so, um. The, the determination needs to be made, uh, for the high water line and, and, I, I can't tell you exactly what it is. If I was on site, I might, I might have a better guess at it, but.
So even though you're gonna take my word, that's what high water, because I go down the market.
I'm, I'm not going to, uh, question that, you know, again, I'm not a protocol officer, either, it's not.
Well, I spoke to both persons in the office, and I would ask them exactly where I should measure it.
Uh, speak up a little bit, uh.
This is.
Shake it a bit.
What did the board want me to do?
Two days.
What did the board want me to do?
Well, uh, I, I personally don't feel I can, uh, you know, uh, grant a condition of permanent until we, we know what the measurements are, uh, from the uh, current building and the proposed addition, uh, in regards to the seventy-five foot line for the height determination. Anything within the seventy-five foot line would not be allowed to go out any greater than twenty feet or the height of the existing structure at, at that, you know, at the seventy-five foot line. So if the existing structure is already twenty-five, and you propose not to go any higher, that will take care of that. That'll get height, uh, without accurate, uh, accurate measurements on, on that, I, I, you know, really can't make a judgment. Also, I have no idea what the height of the current structure is, either, that's not, I didn't see that shown anywhere.
Okay, so that's what you're saying, that you don't think you would be able to.
Right, that, and then, uh, also, as Greg pointed out as well, uh, is some of the current structure outside of the hundred-foot line. Um, and that's going to, that's going to work into the calculation of the percentage of expansion that can be done within that with, inside the hundred, because you can't, you can't take the structure footprint outside of the hundred and apply that to its thirty percent.
Greg, did you have anything you wanted to say yet?
Well, I can, I can help if you have a question about that.
I do.
So if, 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 if the building, let's say the building is between the seventy-five and the hundred-foot line entirely, a hundred percent, then you can expand that thirty percent total. If the building, let's say, is split half in the middle, so it's, it's, say, a thousand square feet, and five hundred square feet is beyond the hundred-foot line, and five hundred feet is closer, you can only expand the piece between the hundred-foot line and the shore, that thirty percent, which means that you'd only be able to expand thirty percent of five hundred, rather than the thousand. But the piece that's a thousand, that's a hundred feet away, doesn't necessarily have a limitation. The only limitation there is the pervious cover and some of the other requirements. So you could make that piece of the, piece of the structure a lot bigger. There's no thirty percent cap on that. Does that make sense?
Almost. I am close, it, it, the whole property is in the hundred-foot zone, let's say I believe it is.
The structure, not the, the structure, yeah.
I don't think it's any more, uh, from the road to the lake. It's not more than, it, it, really close to that.
Yep.
That would indicate the whole structure in the, kind of.
Right, then you could use the whole hundred foot. But then you could, I mean, use the whole thirty percent, because the entire structure is within the hundred foot. But then the seventy-five foot, when it comes to the height requirement, then you have to play, as you get closer to the water, there's a height limitation. And you have to know what, number one, what's the existing structure height, and then number two, what's the limitation in our ordinance? So, we're not gonna make you, we're not gonna make you make the buildings lower than it is already. So if the building's already twenty-one feet tall, we can allow you twenty-one feet tall, because it's already twenty-one feet tall, and it's not increasing the non-conformity.
I understand. Or the whole building is in the hundred foot zone. That can expand thirty percent.
Yeah.
Because of the height of that.
But the height.
It's the seventy-five foot to the top of the building.
Yeah, seventy-five feet line has to be, no, no piece of the structure can be higher than twenty feet, unless it already is.
So if, if, if I'm trying to set it back. But you just need to know the map to show that.
Right, and for the shoreline, like I said originally, like, I mean, you have two sixty-eight here, that doesn't make any sense if the shoreline slopes away. So if you're saying those numbers are right, then your shoreline needs to be redrawn correctly, because the shoreline's not correct.
Well, it's certainly not to scale on the map.
Well, I understand, not to scale, but drawn completely the wrong direction, that's not right. So it should be absolutely perpendicular to the line, because they're exactly the same number. It should make a nice square, right?
Well, the building is at a skew, and the, and the lake is at a skew. So those particular measurements are the same. Every state across the whole part of the building, I put them on each corner of the building, and we're on the post. Addition's gonna be there.
Okay, so if you're saying the measurements are right, what I'm saying is your map is wrong.
Mine may be wrong.
So just correct that map to make sure it makes sense. So, because your shoreline can't go that direction, e- even though the camp is at a skew, you have two different measurements. That make sense?
So redraw the map, so it's more in line with that.
It has to be in line.
It's, it's.
Yeah.
The measurements will be the measurements, that's, no matter how the map is drawn, it's just.
Potentially, but anytime something's at a skew, somebody says, well, I'm gonna come off the front of the camp, and now it's a hundred and twenty feet away, and you go, no, it's not a hundred and twenty feet away. You have to go to the nearest point of the water.
I understand.
So the, the, the direction of the line is really important. And if the camp is skewed and the shore is skewed, trying to represent those the best we can, so that they're correct. So I'm just saying that the way it's drawn, and there's two different lines, you can't have a trapezoid that's diverging with two sides that are equal. It just doesn't work, right? You, you can have a parallelogram, both sides parallel, but both sides are sixty-eight. You can't, that you, the, the two ends have to be parallel to each other.
So I will read this map here.
Okay.
Thank you. Just, can you, anyone else have anything they wanted to say?
I just wanted to ask the question when everyone's, it'll be okay. Does anyone else have any questions or anything?
Is the permeable area calculated in here somewhere? Is it, it's okay. But I saw what you said.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understand. So you're looking for a line, this is my understanding of it, that follows the shoreline, that's seventy-five feet and a hundred feet?
Yeah.
Okay, and then that will show where the house is.
Right, yeah, I, I, we're not asking for every single point to be drawn, just enough to make sense, so that we're like, okay, here's, and if you have a complex shore, then you need to have a complex line. So, you know, but that's, it's, it's nice to know where the house is, but it's really more important where that seventy-five foot and that hundred foot line, and if somebody happens to be really close to shore, twenty-five foot line.
Mm-hmm.
So that's another restriction, so, and then even the two hundred and fifty foot line is nice to know, because that's, you know, the boundary of the watershed, so if we're doing the pervious cover. So those are important lines.
Yep.
That affect whether we, what we give you.
I believe I understand that, and if you're not clear, I can convey that to you.
He doesn't need to worry about the twenty-five foot line, because he's not doing anything there, so that's why I said you don't need that one.
And the two, two.
You, you don't need that one either. For, for your case, you only need the seventy-five and the hundred, but it does vary depending on where the structure is. That's all.
I can dish that information.
Thank you. Are you all, did you have anything else you wanted to talk?
No, besides that, is there anything else I need to?
I don't think so. Did anyone else have anything?
Oh, I just. But I think I may actually.
I would make sure to confirm with Mark on measuring the height.
Yes.
So you have to locate that seventy-five foot line and measure the height from there. But just make sure you're following good procedures for measuring the height.
Yes, I did, I have a little point.
Yeah. Yeah.
Actually, I did have one comment, uh, uh, again, directing this was the Don, but, uh, the, uh, uh, in the application, there were several, uh, several sheets that required signatures. And the copies I got, the signatures, if they were there, are totally eligible, uh, and I, those were actually signed documents.
It's like.
They were, yeah, it came, showed dated in the copies.
Yeah, I assumed that was the case, but just, just in case, I don't wanna see, uh, the authority to, to do something with, out of actual signature on that.
Okay, people, what I wanna know.
Well, I have one more, one more, Betty. I just wanted to make sure, I said, I didn't see anything on the plan, but I just wanted to double-check that you weren't taking down any substantial trees to do the.
No, there's, our, we're, uh, we're both, we're, so right now.
Okay.
On some trees that are gonna be taken down, but they will use verticals and lock them.
So you are gonna be removing trees?
There's, there's a couple trees that are damaged, that need to come down.
Okay.
And they're, and they're on a map, that we can actually, they're working on, or, or, there's, there's.
Okay, and we're gonna, you're gonna replant as you take those down?
Exactly.
Okay. And that would be, that would be nice for us to have that as well.
Okay.
So, thank you.
I have some questions. I have some questions.
So.
Uh, looking, looking at the plot plan, uh, we haven't talked about it, uh, at all, but there's, there's setback issues um, from the road. As I read it, it shows twenty foot. I think a setback is forty foot. Yeah, the question I have for Don is, is this one similar to one we've just worked with? It needs to be submitted to the state, DEP?
No. It's just.
He's not requesting a variant, so it's not, it is not the same, but, and I could be wrong, but my understanding of the ordinance is that you can't get, make it more non-conforming. So even though it's twenty feet and it doesn't need to forty feet, he's not going closer, um, than the sixteen feet that is currently the co, the closest point of the building.
That, that's correct. That's the way, that's, that's the way they work his trees. Is that's not a, so he can build as long as he doesn't increase the non-inconformity.
Okay.
Say that.
Um, yeah, the other question I have is, uh, does this need to go to the zoning board of appeal before we review it?
It does not need to go to the zoning board of appeals, it's not gonna increase the non-conformity.
Okay, because it's further back than the, where the house is now.
Exactly.
Okay, other question is, uh, is there work being done for the septic system, a new septic system across the road or the right away? There's a document attached on the, on the back, and it shows a, a new drainage field, new septic tank, and it looks like it, it's in the, it's in the lot across the road from the house. It's the very last page in the document that you sent us on.
Yeah, so they submitted, with the application, they submitted for Mark to review, and, you know, what's this board reviews, that they would ha, have to have that septic designed for.
So that is a new drainage field, new, new septic system?
Correct.
Now, that's pretty, that's pretty wooded across the road, right?
Yes, it is. There, there's a state group engineer that designed the system for us.
So that, that lot is treeed currently?
Yes, it is.
So that'll have to be all cleared?
A certain section, but yes.
I, I didn't hear that.
Yes, a certain part of it will need to be a little, uh, cleared.
You know what area that is? That a hundred by hundred, or?
Oh, I don't know, there's, there's a twenty-foot buffer zone all around property, it's not gonna be tight. And wherever the septic system is gonna be, they're gonna be cleared, and that was approved by the local supervisor.
So you leave a twenty-foot buffer around the lot perimeter?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Nobody has anything.
I'm, I'm sorry, one more question and one more point is, uh, Ed, Ed was asking for a setback from the, from the lake as to what was currently out for the current, current building. Um, it would help to see the property lines on the side. The roadside property line and the shore property line are there, but I, unless I missed it, I don't see the two on the side property lines.
Yeah, I did. There is, uh, one measurement, one side property, and then two other measurements on the other side of property.
They're not on.
They are.
Just on the, on the separate, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, but they're not needed for the septic, but that's, that would be on a hundred, so.
Okay, boy, it's your pleasure.
Well, why I asked is, it looks like, looking at tax maps and. Well, why I asked is, it looks like, looking at tax maps and, uh, in the D, it looks like a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifteen feet on two sides.
Right, the, the D said a hundred and sixteen feet on the road frontage. And a hundred feet on the lake frontage. But it didn't give me any length on the other sides.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I should put those on the next map.
Thank you.
But did you wanna make sure it was public?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to keep.
Were there any public comments? Did anyone say anything? No, or on Zoom? Any Zoom people wanna say anything? They, I can't see.
Nobody's seen, yeah.
Okay, okay, alright, I guess we'll all start. Go ahead. You can do.
Who do you wanna do?
Whatever you choose.
Madam Chair, if I could ask a quick section, so I wanna understand moving forward. The, the, the measurement that you're looking for in terms of the height is that you wanna make sure of the height of the existing structure, cause he's showing the proposed as twenty-five feet, you wanna make sure that, okay, is it whichever is higher? I just wanna make sure I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay.
The existing structure is important because.
Good.
Measure per, uh, what Mark told you. Yes, yeah, exactly, the low side.
Motion, anybody?
I can make a motion, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna make a motion that case number twenty-three oh five consideration request from Alex and Jean. Bones, Williams, Hudson. Lake House Design Bill Agent for a condition use permit for the exan- expansion of a single-family residence in the shoreline zone located at twenty-four South Upper Narrows Lane on Town Map thirty-three Lot Two. Uh, be tabled until, uh, the board receives the, uh, updated drawing with the requested dimensions. Um, and the plan that, uh, shows the tree removal and tree replanting area. So, those two.
I should agree with.
And, and the height verification. Yeah. I'll second that.
On favor?
This is Jim, I'm in favor.
Yes, go ahead, yes.
Then he was in favor.
Was that what you said?
Yeah, that's.
Now, I'm gonna come up here.
How many of us are?
Uh, thank you very much.
Really good.
Seven. Okay, I think, I think we're back to where we were. We have any, we don't have any other cases?
No, there's, there's a couple of minutes.
Sure.
That should probably go.
Let's, let's draw, I'm sure. Do you wanna go ahead?
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Sorry about the delay, but it's in the issue, but we're gonna be interested in that.
Oh, we need intermission.
So, um, we, okay, we can have an intermission.
Intermission, intermission.
We're gonna have a five-minute intermission in case anybody needs it.
Yeah, I think.
Sounds good.
Thinking a lot.
It's usually made. You know, I sound like home mom when you say that, cause I'm, okay. Yeah, I have time, I'm gonna go to the show. Everything, and it'd be one meal a day.
Yeah.
What?
Cause my husband has to make it. I'm confused.
Well, Aaron, I'm just. What's happening?
I'm confused.
If there's anybody help there, anyone to do anything else.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that was, I'm ready for my family, I, yeah. And it's always hard when you first do something, after that, it just depends.
Yeah. It's a lot of.
Yeah, her friend.
All of you kind of been a little double tonight.
Well. These are really fun, I think, and I appreciate Joe doing it, but I would hate to make people. We've done seven of them.
Oh, yeah.
It's good to move, okay.
Yeah.
Gotta find the kid.
Yeah.
Oh.
We left, yeah. We were all, uh.
We should tell her, yeah, listen to you. We will listen to you, Joel, honest to God.
That's fine, no, no, I'm just. Go back on the room clear, is, oh.
Do we usually, uh, have a sunset on a meeting like past eight or what?
No, we.
I'm not expecting to do all of this tonight.
We can't intend no matter what, but nine is.
Came in at six, or.
Yeah, so nine is perfectly fine, but, uh, we just find a good stopping point, call, we don't, and if you need to go.
If you're tired today, and you've done enough, we've done enough.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I mean, you keep doing something, I, all of a sudden, something you get to like, I can't do it.
Right.
I've read this over and over and over, it means nothing anymore.
I didn't, when they not.
I should have looked, maybe you guys.
I know, I almost thought about, I thought about that at the last minute.
I don't know, Gil didn't know.
I think, I think we had all, I kind of looked around and did, it's all gone.
Did Gil not realize that we were gonna continue with this?
I don't know.
I don't know.
You have to look at anything I said, I don't remember.
I think. We're not gonna move on.
Well, there was a point where I, I ran out of time, so.
I would like to see.
I really didn't get to comment on everything.
That's a good.
His proposal, but they did.
Joel, you haven't seen that interview.
No.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, I don't.
I mean, I think that's the good to have.
It'll be.
As we're going through. Wouldn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I've got so many proposals, I don't know if it will come anymore.
Oh, feel I.
Do you have like a pack like this?
I've heard it, I'm putting it all on the computers, but.
Boy, you're smart.
Somehow I, I get stuff and.
Make, make me a pass, will you?
I must be putting it in the wrong form, cause I, something disappeared in me.
Then he goes, let it go, let it go.
Oh, is that responding to me?
Ed. Gil, Gil's got a, I guess a marked up copy, shouldn't we be looking at that? As we go through.
We have a credit.
Uh, we don't have it.
Yeah, but it's there, do LLC.
Don's got it.
Don's just gonna, I think she's gonna.
Body evaluate that, hey.
Uh, I think it's getting healthy to have it as we go through, or then after.
It would be, yeah, it would be helpful.
I mean, solar parks, ever, solar parks is LLC, whoever's been here and talked to it.
Without change, I'm not sure how.
Right, right.
They can be, oh, it's hexagon, if you know.
But it's like.
That's.
I'm not sure of that.
The LLC is running them, they're all.
I'm gonna sit down in LLC.
With that, so I don't know if that, was that the case, this, or would it.
Sounds like the amount of bike extension, yeah, like I said, man.
Is that happier to hold it against us, they don't have a record, and somebody else does, even if it's bad.
Well, yeah, but I'm trying to do that.
I mean. How would you know?
Like, we're gonna use a paper, we're gonna read it, we can't do it.
Yeah, you know.
So we're gonna try.
Be cautious of that. Yeah.
I think they, I think I don't see a day.
You couldn't mail this stuff, yeah.
That's a great idea.
Like you're, you're.
Yeah, we do a case.
I had just created, I think that's.
And, you know, but it's, it's no good.
We're gonna.
Yeah.
It's subjective.
Pick a bad problem to.
I think we're getting.
Oh, that was one.
Oh, wait, we have to find ourselves now?
Alright. Yeah, man.
I think we are. I love to steal.
Okay. I used to bring forth one of those.
This is what I want.
I just ran from the one million.
Well, hopefully we can.
Anything with me.
That drawing totally confused me.
Oh, yes.
I didn't see those things. Line there. I said they can't be distances, the, the, the lines go the wrong way. Cause the shore goes that way, and the building goes that way.
Yeah, that was confusing.
So I said that can't be distances, then I made it.
I, I think it's, it's had to distance, but some agents.
I don't know, the whole thing was beginning to. I wasn't getting.
Could be what it is.
I was like, why are those?
It just doesn't show where all the pieces are.
I think you should vote alternate. Oh, because, I'm sorry, I really. Always. Without my, it's my first day, I failed her, I didn't run anything.
Not being more extended.
Leave it to me.
I have Samsung membership, so I could probably.
It'll be the morning.
It's not gonna be consistent, but. Yeah.
I'm down then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the rock.
Yeah.
Am I gonna take his word for it, or not me, it's total for it?
Alright, we ready to rock and roll?
Get that one.
Yeah, it is, particularly where he's.
Bet you like.
It's like serious, right? He said.
Petsville.
How far is that?
Like an hour, is that a good skill?
About fifty minutes.
Oh, Lord, go ahead. We will, soon, our meeting is destroyed.
Okay, um, so we go to section five, I believe, which was talking about application procedures. Um, I just amended the first one, just to, uh, number one, ma'am, is to draw a tablet, the, the, for couples. Um.
Would, would someone tell me what article we're on?
Definitely, it's article. Four, section five. When I set the bottom of page eight.
Which, I, I still didn't, Joel, I didn't get the article number, what is it, please?
Article four, section five.
Four? Four or five?
Four.
Okay, article four, what section?
Section five.
And what subset?
Uh, just A, as, as we go.
We're starting with A, thank you.
Yeah.
So moving down, I didn't, um, I thought I just added, uh, require a schedule and onsite inspection if required, I don't know if we, you would always require. Uh, do you always require onsite inspection, or that is the part to decide on?
It's program.
Yeah, okay, so does it require that, yeah, um, so number three. Uh, I guess, I mean, I guess this, we need to just check procedurally, these match up with what you guys do already, just to make sure that they're all the same as your existing procedures in terms of, uh, administration.
I'll, I'll go through and confirm one of that.
Uh, same with the, well, subsection B, so we're talking about public hearings. Um, again, I think that should just have to match up with whatever the current, um, regulations are, and with the offices, I think that's Alex found that the, that seems a shitty, nothing at all.
What?
Do you guys do a thousand feet or five hundred feet from property lines for a body notice, do you know?
In, in the rural district, it's a thousand.
Okay, so that.
I mean, otherwise I could.
Great, good enough, thank you. That matches up there in a thousand feet, um. Planning Board decision is telling the timelines of, you know, how long the, the board has to make its, do its various, so considerations, or subsection C. But now we're into section six, without the pass, section six, uh, inspections. We have a comment in there, annual inspections. Uh, are we okay with the CEO doing this, or we ask for a third-party inspector, our state inspection? Uh, it says, our business is designated on the sale, and excited to someone else, some, someone else. That was me, just telling JB that it already says they're designated. Okay. Between the CEO.
Okay.
Mark, right, Mark commented on that before, that he doesn't want to inspect them, he's not qualified.
Oh, that's right, but he doesn't have, it says, it says, is or her designate, so he already can designate that to whoever. And I believe that we talked later about, um, the costs of not having to. Yes, yeah.
He currently uses a third-party inspector.
Okay.
It's not a reimbursement situation, he proves who they use, so maybe I'll check with him on that, make sure it's consistent.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, I'll pay for that.
Right.
Yeah, I think later in the arguments, he does talk about, about third-party inspections and, and.
What's an annual compliance date is required?
Good question.
Is that maybe what that is, is the third party?
Yeah, if we're having to do an annual inspection, then there's a fee for, yeah, I assume that that talks about, that's, it has to be happened annually, then that's, that's to be paid for annually in the same way. Okay, so section seven, conditions and limitations. Oops, okay, I don't know. Oh, it's cause I'm going through the comments as a typical, so the planning board to receive an annual report on project. So, under our rule, or needs our rule. No. Yeah, that just seems fine, um.
Where is that?
It says in the middle of A, it says, the report should be provided to the planning board, town council, and mineral extractives applicant operator.
Jeez Louise.
Yeah, right there, it doesn't seem like we should be reviewing this every year.
Oh, I mean, if, if it's being inspected by the proper people annually, I don't see why.
Usually, it usually just goes to CEO, yeah, opposite, any actions required, and then. Wait, the last sentence is fine, I just, I agree, I agree there, and I take that out, I don't think that. Just remove that sentence, I think, right, there's no intention, so it's, is that okay with everyone to remove the sentence requiring, um, reports provided to the planning board, town council. Because the CEO, if there are any, the CEO should be, uh, sufficient. But, but you can, I guess, don't take out both sentences, you wanna say, reports should be provided to the, the applicant operator, they should get one.
Yeah.
Just take out that one, and the town council.
And we can always keep the requires.
Yeah.
You have on the agenda report, so we can, if it goes to the CEO, we make sure that we still, let the board know that this has this.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, it's something that, it's, no, we're not a police, yeah, that's exactly, the code, it's an officer, the policing entity, not us.
So.
Once it's permitted, it's permitted.
Where did the say goes for the CEO?
He just deleted it. Oh, it's right at the top. Oh, kill that, he, he's, yeah.
I, I had a question regarding the term, the annual compliance fee, um, and I, I guess this is the question is, uh, is this something we want to require an annual fee for?
Yes.
Uh, this is outside the fine line, we're going to prove or disprove, uh, whatever, but once we've given it the go-ahead.
I'm, I'm not clear on what the fee is for, if we, if we require that, if Mark has a third-party inspector do the report. Is it an application fee, is, I'm not sure what that fee is.
We made an application, they're referring to the applicant paying for that.
That's what I would think we should do. But another arbitrary fee is kinda.
I guess that's the question, do, do we wanna set it up as, you know, I, I hate to throw out all kinds of different fees, but I mean, if we're gonna charge an annual fee and work the compliance out of that, or whatever.
I don't see how we should charge for this and not do every thing that's going on.
Right. My recommendation would be to require the report.
Right, and not the fee.
Yeah, they pay for the, the inspection, and that's it.
Whatever. Costs that.
Or not, it would be paid to the town.
Acquire.
That, that, I, that's, the administration of that could be difficult.
But.
So, so the town would not bill them?
No, they would provide the report, they would pay for the report, but the third party is approved by the town, the CEO, that would be in, in this instance, this is how I'm interpreting it, the, the designate would be this company that would do the report, but they're paid directly from the applicant.
Right, and that's exactly, that works for billing codes, right?
We're, yeah, we're.
And that's perfectly fine, but I think we need to leave that in, because at some point in the future, it could be that the CEO is actually doing the inspection. And I know some towns, they do that, then we should be charging a fee, cause that is gonna be, he, he would be doing all the compliance, not a third-party inspector, that they would be paid, okay? So I think it's reasonable to leave it in there, but there is no fee from the town. It's only they have to either pay the inspector, or they pay the CEO, if the CEO is doing the inspection. So the is, should be changed.
But. Is Mark? Oh, sorry, I didn't even hear him talking.
Oh, and annual compliance fee, you wouldn't say may be required, yeah, that would be a good way to say it.
Yeah.
Because the town is doing it, it should be required, if a third-party inspector is doing it, it would not be required.
Or, or did you just say the cost of the annual inspection will be paid for by the applicant?
That's.
And then you could bill them out for the CEO's time, in that case, if it's not a third-party inspector.
You could, yeah. How you doing?
I read that, it sounds like an annual fee.
Yeah.
Uh. If I was. Then we still might make a paper.
Okay, do we wanna, do we wanna Switch this out with the.
I prefer how Don said it, I don't know about everybody else.
You still read that as as.
Yeah.
And they would be paying an annual fee, yeah, okay.
Or leaving it open to. Somehow somebody saying you owe a fee, I don't know, who would be that, like? I don't know.
Ultimately, you don't want, you want the report, but you don't want to pay, town to pay for it, that's, yeah.
Right, right, you need to, if the co enforcement officer does it, the town should get reimbursement for that, right? But if the town doesn't do it, a third party inspector does it, then then the property, the business owner would pay.
Yeah.
We say that, then, you know, I mean. So they'd be the.
Well, it says applicant slash operator, yeah, a lot of places, I would continue to use that. I think that's a good way to say it, because then you're covering yourself.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that makes.
Okay. Thank you, for section seven. Conditions and limitations, um. This is basically about for any describing any, what happens before any activity begins. I don't see any immediate comments. There are nothing to add about that, section seven, final one of. Article four. The Blue House.
Yeah.
Five in one year, the data difference, is that in line with what you do already?
Yeah. Did I have a question on that? I can't see that print on the right.
No, it would come up as.
Yeah, I'll see the little comments.
It also mentioned, you know, transfer of the operating terms of ownership, so that. There's always looking at this if this is. Okay, then to article five, which is kind of the meat of this, which is the government standards. First, section one, and there's five sections within that, the general requirements. And one comment, the, uh. Um. What I was talking about wildly against things of this nature.
Oh, that was for.
Specifically.
Point capacity, yeah, that was the one you wrote on wildly against the.
Yeah.
E, which is the planning board should consider the financial capacity, technical ability, performance. And I said, I'm not necessarily against it, but I just don't know the metrics you'd actually use to evaluate it.
Yeah.
You know, if if there was a, how would we? Consider the financial capacity if it's a brand new LLC? Even if they're twenty years in business, how would we be able to evaluate that?
It's very fluid.
It's, it's, it's.
The way I'm used to doing it is, um, they provide the estimated budget and, you know, for the installation. Of the site work, you know, the the the. What they're proposing, and then they have some kind of financial capacity to show that they, you know, have the. The means, whether that be credit or. Uh, whatever that might be, you know, actual money in the bank, um, to actually be able to fulfill that.
But if we're, if we're asking for a surety bond, and that they have to have liability, and they have to put money aside for reclamation. Why do we need to know their finances?
Right.
Uh, it feels intrusive, the same thing with technical ability and performance records. You, nobody that I know that is gonna have a gravel pit or be in charge of excavation, and that's, most of them don't go to. School, how are you gonna? See, like. Are you a good excavator or not, are you, like, there's no excavator school.
Oh, we've got all our liability covered, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so they don't go with their deal, and they go broke.
That's their problem.
And we've got the money to go restore the land.
Exactly, and then performance record, it's like, I feel like you're credit checking them. And again. That's really none of our business.
The only part we care about credit checking is that they got their bond, it's paid for.
Right, exactly.
Check their bonds here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a big one, how people lose too, to check it on the elderly.
I don't see that, I've worked in communities where they. Required all that, and the information would be said. There wa- there wasn't really a lot that we knew what to do with it, and we just cash, surety, bond, letter of credit, once we had that. The helper level was there, so.
Then that all becomes public. Through the meeting here, and I personally would. Like that, I think, that's true, that's not really a bad business venture.
You know, because then if, then you'd almost want to put it in an LLC, because then you say, I don't have any of that.
It's none of your business.
Because you can't have any of that, it's just for the mineral extraction operations, okay?
Do we want to delete the section?
Yeah, I think so.
Everyone okay with that? Makes sense to me.
Yeah, performance record makes a difference.
But, I mean, if you think about it, though, say you had a disaster of a business ten years ago, you don't know why, you can't speak to it, things happen in people's lives, and.
I'm not disagreeing with you there, I'm saying that if somebody. Was caught, shall we say, doing something that was not. Exactly on the up and up.
Right.
You'd want to know about it. You don't want it happening in your town. I don't think.
Well, I mean, here's the other thing, too, what if it was a business that was owned by multiple people, and somebody got roped into it, and they weren't necessarily the one that were going to suffer for that? For the rest of their lives?
I mean, I think there's a lot of occupations and different things that you have, you have to be. Checked on before you do.
Yeah, but not by the town.
Right. Not by the town, it's not the governments.
And, well, and as a business, again, like every solar farm, we've approved of all the LLCs.
They could have.
And they're brand new LLCs, they're not existing, so there there's nothing you can do, so I'm just saying, what would stop somebody that had a bad record, that did a few things? From making an LLC, so now you're only going to penalize somebody that comes in and actually been doing this for a long time?
I think it makes sense that if they if they can put up the product standards. And it doesn't matter what. Not that other stuff, as long as the town's going in terms of having those front standards and, um, sorry, I'm sure it is in bonds. They can make a complete absolute, and then the term that they're fighting for, I don't know what to say, right, yeah.
Boy, and you're talking about the annual inspection, what if somebody gets into this? Three months later, getting all kinds of. Plans. Is there something in the?
He can go in any time.
It's a general function of calling fast, if there's something going on.
But anybody can call D E P anytime on any gravel pit, just so you know, and they can go do an inspection, because they need a state permit as well as the town.
But do they have the expertise that a third party would have?
The D P, yeah, yeah.
They have, they have all the expertise.
Like, we'd probably rather them go through the D E P than call Mark, and be like, Mark.
Yeah, I have several people, and that's all they do.
Yes, yeah.
I think that doesn't make sense.
Right, they are the experts.
Think about it that way.
Why don't they do the annual one?
Well, there's, aren't they supposed to do?
What's that?
Aren't they supposed to do something annually to D E P, isn't that in the?
They'll have to submit their reports to D E P.
But they don't come out and do an actual inspection on their own at all?
I think they do the initial assessment, yeah, I think they do the initial assessment.
Isn't that what we use, right?
The the state actually does a separate inspection to get their state permit.
Okay.
So, and I don't know if the state does.
Standard, oh, standard.
Yeah, right, but they have a twenty-four-seven call line, anybody can call anytime. And D E P can do a site visit at any time.
Gotcha.
Separate from the town.
Yeah, I think you applied to the, uh. D E P will periodically just. You know, do a routine inspection, uh. Probably not annually, particularly for places that have been good operators, but.
And OSHA.
OSHA's the same thing, I mean.
Yeah.
I think you're right, I think they they know the bad guys. So, I mean, they know who has, is not doing, following the rules.
But e- e- even even with that, I mean. They, a a lot of the, a lot of the D E P programs have. Have regular inspections, just. You know, kind of random inspections of. Of, uh, various facility, good or bad record, the bad record obviously kind of give a lot more attention, but. Uh, it's not to say that they're not going to. Just bring my some data.
Okay, so general fund standards in the section two, also general notes, uh, um. Specific fund standard. So getting into the fund standards, proper, the number one, significant wildlife habitat, or obviously. Undisturbed, uh, solid waste sewage, groundwater. Um, in several subsections.
Okay.
Hydro hydrogeologic evaluations needed to be performed.
Can I say something?
That even one.
Seven.
I was. I can remember someone saying about the deer, it's a place up there where the deer collect. And stay in the, in the winter, they go, they go up there, did anyone have a media that?
I remember that, yeah.
Deer deer wintering area, yeah.
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 You can't have that according to this, I mean, if one's there.
No, no, that that's, they don't go to the exact same spot, when they winter, they usually do it in somewhat of an open field, they do it together.
Yeah.
So somebody picks a spot, like birds, you know, like somebody picks a spot, and everybody joins in. But it's not, it's not a designated wildlife habitat or anything like that, the deer can winter anywhere.
But if there was, if if there was, then you you could not have a quarry, it'd be boring things up there.
Well, the the natural areas program, the, um, um, D E P again have. Lists of what they would call, see, if they're wildlife habitats.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're, they're all mapped out, um.
Okay, that's where you would find the answer, that was my question.
They also included, oh, yeah, the comprehensive plan.
Not doing down the road, that part hurts.
No, no, there's a map there, and you go to look at that, yeah, there's a site, you know, a site, um, posed at certain place, that's one thing.
So they'd, they'd be able to say, oh, no, no.
Yeah, well, they also have protected wildlife, you know, endangered species, protected. Exactly, so they 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 identify those areas, they can do anything there.
Okay, good, thanks.
So, yeah.
Right, and and with that, like I said, state has a lot of, uh. Map, you know, deer wintering area, but it doesn't mean that. The deer. That's the only place they're going to go, I mean, they they go here this year, they add next year.
I thought they had one place, they went, I don't.
You you would think so.
It's not going to be a crossing sign, that's always where they cross.
No, they usually pick a spot, and it's usually two years after the tree cutters have gone through. Because they have a lot of small shoots, they like eating the little maple trees and things like that, so there's food for them, so that's where they'll go. Yeah, if you got no landlords, they may go there, but they're in a winter where they don't have to go far for food during the winter.
Just like the rest of us.
You know, gravel, there's rooters coming out there, they're going to feed on that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, anything, anything.
This is a good place to hang out.
That's right. Yep.
Okay, thanks.
That's a lot.
This is one or one or more, I guess, I thought the.
I'll check this.
Yeah, I thought we were requiring more than, uh. I guess, or more, I think it was, I first thought.
At least one test bit or monitoring one must be established on each five acres. Yep, yep.
Yeah, that's a state requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of groundwater, subsections, um, five. A through. Does represent a lot of the, um. The remains, D E P standards, through page. Sorry, is it still?
No, I'm good, I went blah 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 past that.
Article four, natural buffer strip, um, yes. Exist in next, yeah, so that's a good, I think, there's at least a natural buffer. Um, on the property. Oh, right now, so. Moving on to number seven, setbacks. Um.
Wait, wait, can we go back to? I'm sorry, protected natural resources, and that, is that a state mandate already?
Yeah, I mean, it lists the streams, rivers, brooks. Wetlands, those are all state mandated natural resource protection.
So all that, okay, then that, the buffer strip.
To be honest, I don't know if that's redundant, if it's only going to be allowed in rural areas anyway, because it's not going to be allowed in a shallow zone, which is. What that's, um. What it's referring to.
The high water.
Of streams.
Or wetlands, yeah.
Streams and wetlands do exist in the rural zone, so. It's self-reliant.
Okay, yeah, 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 I suppose it's not, yeah, the streams and wetlands, that's not necessarily classified, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because you've got streams, which. Don't classify, you're probably still on the jet. Okay, um. Yeah, from from rural ways, that'll probably.
Is that a state thing, though?
Oh, no.
It's really in protection, yeah, and what I ordered is seventy-five feet, so.
No, the the public and private roads.
I don't know if it is, but. I think it's.
But what's that for, why? Natural buffer strip.
On seven A.
Working edge.
This, the term protected location.
Oh, I see.
Um. And. I I guess I questioned, kind of. What specifically that is, that we. I didn't, there were, you know, the. Wetlands and the streams and so forth.
Um, like, didn't we already say all that? Basically, is it redundant?
Well, there's a setback, the streams, it's all. It might be like a different, uh. Yeah, there might be a setback, different number.
Over the strip, setbacks. Well, so. Yeah, I think the protective location is the full to. Define, I mean, uh.
And wait, actually.
Oh.
If we go back up. It's only a hundred feet, and then there could be a stream right next to it, is what we're saying?
Are you saying the buffer strip part B?
Yeah.
The part B is the buffer strip.
Of seventy-five feet, buffer strip.
No, min- minimal, seven B is the visual impact.
No, I'm sorry, I'm back up, we're back up at five, five, five A and five B.
Underneath.
So, wait, maybe I'm misunderstanding, so buffer strip is like vegetation.
Yeah.
In between, so it could still be like. Five hundred feet away, but you still want to have seventy-five feet of buffer strip?
Yeah.
In addition to the di- extra distance. That's what that's saying?
Well, a- again, your seven A is, is, the question is, what is protected location?
No, right, if I'm at five. That's what I'm saying, I'm getting confused on.
Okay, so five is just the natural buffer strip around any waterway.
Okay.
So stream, wetland, they're saying for stream or or wat- wetland or wa- surface water body is a hundred feet. From any seasonal water bodies, infernal pool is seventy-five feet.
Okay, yep.
So that's a little bit more restrictive, our our order is seventy-five and seventy-five, so, but that's fine, there, you know, it's a little bit more restrictive. And our word is saying, don't get near the stream, basically, or water body.
Yeah.
That's all that says, that has nothing to do with the property line, that's the stream itself.
Stream itself, right, so.
And seven talks about the property boundaries.
Okay.
That buffer strip, seven B is the property boundaries.
Yes.
Not the stream or.
Gotcha.
But, yeah, one, one, again, that's a protective locations.
Well, seven A, we we need to figure out what that means.
Yes, yeah.
And and that could be, you know, endangered species or something, I don't know what that is, but.
Yeah, go ahead, uh.
Okay.
Did we define quarries and burrow pits separately? I think we did, I think I checked it in the definitions, but.
So, yeah, so.
I thought, I've got a copy. I thought I checked that, but I just wanted to double check myself. And I thought, I thought.
Screening, seal the operations, is not a property, but.
We could, we could, there. Substantial differences in state, right, right, and I think those are state definitions, and borough bit of development. For specimens, they have ground, that's not a foundation of property.
There's non-natural buffer strips. Certain times, there's certain things where they require the developers, okay, some vegetation.
Okay.
You know, there's not naturally trees that have to be. You know, there's not naturally trees that have to be.
Got it.
Well, or, can you go back up for a second, though? I didn't put it on there, but do we want to allow seven B part two?
Yeah, I would, um.
With the butter's written permission, do we care what the butter says?
Well, because the butter might not be the butter forever.
That's a good point, that's why I sell the house and then, right.
Mm-hmm.
Where everyone, yeah.
Once you got a big gravel pit, you got a big gravel pit.
Yeah.
So that would, that would actually eliminate C two, with Zen things, so you can take those two paragraphs.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense, because you're right, just because of present about doesn't mean that future about, oh my god. Might think differently.
Yeah.
Okay, everyone okay with deleting those two paragraphs, because second paragraph would be, and then all C. Okay?
Yeah, all my paper notes didn't make it into my online notes.
Aw.
End up with my trouble.
Um, you're losing sentimentation control.
Wait, can we go back to C?
Yeah.
Neighboring nuisance from dust noise, uncertain. That's quite a lot of, uh, I mean, I understand.
This is, that's putting in a screening where it would not fully exist.
That's a quite expensive, maybe unreachable goal to give to a company that's doing all of these other things. Would this be like the, the safety fencing around a quarry?
No, this is to provide.
This is different than that?
This is to provide, like, the physical and visual barrier between the operation and the borders.
You know, I just wonder, there's so much different elevation, like, how are you gonna make everybody happy to not?
Make everybody happy.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to submit a plan about how they're gonna screen their operation from, some of it might be taken care of naturally. And where it's not, they might not, they might come up with a plan, said, if you're.
Is this normal?
Well, have you ever driven the other side?
Yeah.
Have you ever driven the other side of Riverside Drive? Have you ever driven out and looked across the river? And seen the massive excavation gravel pits slash blasting pits?
No, and it's ugly?
Some people think it's ugly.
Oh, what's that row when you're going through Monmouth and there's like a big lake? And there's a gravel pit there?
Yeah, I mean, so that's, that's the idea behind that, is we have the vegetated buffer, but it could be when they should provide the view shed analysis, that everybody can see it because of just where it is. And that would be the way to say, you need to provide some kind of screening other than the trees, because they're not big enough, so people can see it.
Can we put in there like a provisional thing, or like? Uh, contingent on like the view shed analysis and location that it may be required?
When we had the, uh, expert came.
Yeah.
Talk about air quality and, and how aggregates fall out and everything. I believe he was saying that one of the state requirements is to have a vegetation buffer just to help collect the dust.
Yeah.
Okay.
Part of the requirement.
So that's through the state already anyway.
Whatever the water does.
So it's kind of pointless for me to keep reading that.
Yeah, so a lot of times the state provides and obviously come up with these things anyway, so they'll just submit them.
Okay.
Screening plans to board as well. I can change shout to main, because I have the best, but the purpose, the. Well, I'd like to, it's like, it's like.
Yeah, you see dust storms down the desert.
Yeah, and that's, that's the kind of provision that you're gonna see in certain.
Because there are no trees to stop.
Yeah.
You don't see dust storms around here, to be.
Right. Well, if you ever go to Freeport and look at the desert of Maine, there is an area there that there is no vegetation. Okay, and it can't grow there, so when they excavate, you can see it.
Hmm.
Because it's a natural buffer strip, but nothing's gonna grow there, because it's straight sand, so.
Again, we're adding erosion and sedimentation control, um. Then surface water protection, storm water management. Traffic, um, I was wondering about this, just, have you guys got standards that already, um, include a lot of the, um, standards for development and access standards? I don't wanna repeat things that, um, are already set.
What are these? Traffic standards, something that they will use by the state?
Um, they're generally things that are in things like site plan review, sections, so site plan review, all that is, that have this, um, most of its four level.
There are some foreign standards in Arizona ordinance, but it's not a full site plan review provision.
I just wanna make sure I'm not, should we put in anything that already exists, because otherwise, you know, you just kick that out of the lot.
I'll hold it for that.
There's probably a few of them, so one, once, once it's traffic, and access sta, well, you know, access standards, um.
Cause I, I had a comment on, uh, the, uh, talking about the site distances for the entrances, Brian. Uh, talking about site distance, uh, measured at a distance fifteen feet back from the edge of the traveled way. The current, apparently, this is the, the entrance or exit to the gravel pit going onto the traveled way, of fifteen feet back from the edge of the traveled way at a height of three and a half feet. Now, I, I guess I was thinking about that and thinking about a dump truck coming out onto the traveled road. The, the, the height of the driver's eyes in the gravel car might be three and a half feet, it's gonna be more like eight and a half feet, something, it's like, it, it's almost like, you know, you're thinking of somebody driving out of there in their corner, just.
Well, that's, I think that's the intent of the car, you know, all those people that work there have to drive there, they need to drive to go home. So it's not the gravel truck, it's.
Yeah, the concept is that, the, the, the higher you are, the better visibility, like you ask, that's why they have the, they won't pass it. Particularly the lower you are, so that's where.
That's important, so, yeah.
Good point.
I don't understand why that's in there. Why do we care? I'm lost. I don't understand this part.
It's almost like a general site review standard, where if you're adding a new, um, road and like, they're joined with an existing town road or state road, then they just wanna make sure that it's, the vehicle's now going in and out of there safe.
Uh-huh.
And if you did it at the, the bottom of a dip, and it's a fifty-five mile an hour road, and you've got trucks.
Whoa.
Popping, you know, popping onto that road now, where people can't see the trucks coming.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So it's just making sure that there's a.
You're going to make that turn on one thirty-five.
Do we require this of like solar panel places?
Well, that's where I was wondering, because, no, well, we have, we're established. Solar panel, uh, we have, we have state standards, but.
Yeah.
Solar panels, they don't access, like, routinely.
Yeah, they should have, like.
They just, once they, they go in, like, you know, twice, three times a year or something.
So any other business that we do where people are driving in and out, we require this?
When they do, when they touch.
But this is all state stuff, staying.
Or a state road.
State road, town, for town.
Yeah, I think this is, I think this is more than it says in our ordinance, I don't think.
That's what I don't say that much.
Yeah, so to me, it's a little bit more.
Is that a good thing or bad thing?
I, I don't necessarily have a problem with it, I just.
I think doing more for just one thing is kind of not fair to them.
But I think these are in line with the states, so I don't really have a problem with it, if we're just adopting what the state does.
So what we require is less than what the state requires, so it's irrelevant anyway?
No, no, they would still have to follow the state requirements, but we don't have it specified out. So, and if, and if somebody comes and connects to one of the town roads, Mark does the inspection, it doesn't go to the state.
So can't we just say, look at the state stuff, please see state stuff, instead of having a two-hundred-page ordinance about traffic?
You can, but you've got to be careful when you say see state ordinance here, because they can change it, change the location, we would have to update ours. Plus, if we cited everything to the state, I could give you a piece of paper and say, here's thirty publications you have to go read.
Yeah.
In order to know which ordinance is. So it's always a balancing act of what you want in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Versus what you don't want in the ordinance.
And then, at some point, we talked briefly at the last meeting about having a site plan ordinance. And some of the pieces that are in this, um, we talked about making sure the minister believe that it's not overlap or that they're consistent. Eventually, through the site plan ordinance, some of this, it could be a shorter document. So it could shrink down and then you would see the site, and then you would see this.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Like traffic, like traffic would be applicable to all.
Right, okay.
So that's why I'm wondering if this fits in there, that it might already exist.
Because it just feels so distant from what we were talking about, that it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, this isn't necessarily, um, exactly, just to mineral extraction operations, it's more of a general thing for any kind of elements, I don't know, we're trying. That's why I'm curious to see if it needs to stay in the law.
It doesn't, I, I would say in general, it doesn't, but because we had so many people come up and mentioned the traffic.
Okay.
With our last case, I would hate to exclude it at this point. Because I'm pretty sure that they're gonna be adamant if they wanna have that traffic.
But then couldn't we just simply show them and be like, here's the state laws right here, it's, if they have to comply by it.
Yep.
It's already there.
Only if, only if the attachments would stay throughout, the attention to a local road.
We would have to reference their, it's not in our ordinance.
Oh.
And this is very common, we're talking about site distance, um, that is very, very common when you review commercial developments, multi-family, so if you update your regulations to have site plan review, a lot of this is gonna be in there for every type of application we look at, because we don't have site plan.
So it'll have to be in here for now, and then it could potentially.
We create a site plan ordinance, we could revoke it, or, you know, we could use this for the foundation of our site plan ordinance.
Yeah.
See, a lot of sections of it.
Yeah. Thanks for the work.
Traffic is bad.
It's twenty-eight to eight, what do you, what do you want?
Should I have that in?
You wanna go until the end, you want to go to a certain point? Up to you.
I'd be happy with eight thirty.
You're right.
I would be happy if we, if we had it at eight thirty, so we can do ten miles.
Okay, that's, that's unfair to me.
Another second, maybe.
All right, we're gonna end it, we'll end at eight thirty.
Yeah.
George.
On the dot, stop and remove events.
Okay, um, so this is just going to involve the same, uh, traffic. And again, I don't know if this is, gets into quite a lot of detail. Um, I can say can stay in there and maybe be the template for future site plan, so keep it in the net. Um, like I said, this is all fairly standard stuff that you're seeing most site of the licenses.
Does the applicant pay for this stuff?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. It's a simple engineering study. I get the book at home.
Yeah, you just have to do a few calculations.
It's not hard, yeah.
Can we, can we, you go back to the section just above that?
Yeah. Road condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I mean, that's one thing to consider, is large trucks.
Use town man in most edition with.
Yeah, you go like posted loads of things.
So this is something that's not a state mandate, this would be our.
Town man times, yeah.
Okay.
This was raised.
So again, right, right.
I want to read it, so early.
Yeah, if you're gonna have large, large trucks going up and down a town road, it might not be good to handle it, you know, makes it. Are they sitting in common conditions to have a lot of large trucks, it seems familiar.
Well, I mean, the, the traffic study that, that's been published here in New England says that eighty to eighty-five percent of all road damage comes from large trucks. You know, cars don't damage roads, trucks damage roads. And who's paying the taxes and who's paying for, you know, who's paying for all those, where are those trucks registered and all that? To make sure the town roads aren't getting destroyed by trucks that the taxpayers are paying for, that you know, all of those questions come into play, but it's been tried many, many, many times. It's a, it's a tough thing to, to tackle. Because can you mandate that those trucks are registered isn't town that they work? No, state doesn't allow you to.
Yeah.
So how do you make sure the roads are not impacted?
Are you registered in the state?
Or, yeah, that's, yeah.
So basically, is, is what that is trying to, to say is that if the road's not good enough for these trucks to go down, that the applicant would have to fix the roads?
Potential, or, you know, based on the road commissioner's evaluation.
Even as a road commissioner, you just have like, had a public works.
I think that's it, public works, we don't have a, yeah, sure, we just have.
No.
Public works, has public works?
Yeah, I don't know if we have a town engineer or if it's.
We do not.
So public works would even, even that would weigh in. I feel like I'm torn on that review.
Like, you buy a property, you should be able to use the road for a business or for private.
I feel like the.
I don't know.
The road in question that, you know. Previous, yeah, I mean, they had however many larger trucks going up and down that road for a long time, for years or whatever, or, I mean.
And if the road looks like right now, that's probably the town's fault.
Well, I mean, that, that.
For not fixing it for how long.
And to put the blame on one, one business, one applicant, that's not necessarily realistic.
It's true. Well, this also does, it just means that, the head of public works gets it, acts up, this, the might be now increased heavy vehicle traffic on this road, maybe that's, it's a planning problem, you may, it's something on prepared schedule, I mean, that's our problem.
So what does require mitigation for head of?
They have to pay for it. Mitigation.
I think I saw where they're resurfacing, totally lame. But I don't know if they're taking into account.
I almost lost that tire a few times on that road.
Just getting going in there.
You know, but, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not quite, it is the detail, but there are regulations in terms of requiring back fees. The substance, I mean, it's just, I can't take that.
Hmm.
So.
I mean, you do think about any kind of tax, taxes would this business be paying anyway? Probably not, cheap taxes.
I mean, to me, all it says, though, is that we can require, we can require an engineering impact study. And if they're gonna add fifty heavy trucks a day onto this road, the impact study's gonna say that road's gonna deteriorate and fail in three years versus five. So we said, we're making you pay the difference.
That's when you as a boss can then.
Yeah.
Make that decision happen, sorry.
Yeah, and again, that's coming from public works director, you know, what is this gonna do and say is this gonna impact that road?
I guess, I mean, I see what you're saying about it, but at the same time, if it was their private road, they'd be required to fix?
No.
Because they own the road?
That's fine.
That would be fine.
Yeah.
But it's a public road where your tax dollars are going toward, I don't know, I'm very torn on it, because I see both sides of it.
Let's, let's see the other side of it, okay, you know, you live right off of that, uh, uh, cutoff road right on one thirty-five, right? That's a town road.
Mm-hmm.
Let's say a business went in right next door to you and that road was destroyed every six months, it turned into huge pothole for worst road you've ever seen. The town has to then go back in and repave and fix that road every six months. Is that fair for the rest of the town's tax dollars to pay for that one road? That only normally was scheduled to be paid once every twenty years, every six months? Not only that, all the damage and the impacts to you in your life, that you can't use the road, you need a four-wheel drive truck just to drive up and down your road because it's so bad. So that's what that statement is trying to get to, is to say, if this is going to impact town roads, we wanna know that. Town roads are designed with a certain engineering plan and an expected, a life expectancy. Certain roads that are feeder roads, cutoff roads, are going to need more maintenance than dead-end, end of the street, basically, residential beating roads, right? So that the time and the energy to require to maintain those roads, they cost different.
So if you talk about mitigation, can there be some sort of percent or cap that we put to it, like, or we if we leave it like this, kind of open-ended, may require mitigation? Like, are we gonna someday go to them and be like, we had to replace the road in four years, instead of ten, you owe us ten million dollars?
No, no, I mean, this is, I mean, yeah, this is upfront, this is saying the road commissioner could come in and say, there could be an adverse impact of that business going in on this road, let's do a study.
So just for the initial.
They're paying for the study, and then that's, that's something we could require them to pay for that, that's not a simple traffic study, right? That's a life expectancy study, that's a little bit more elaborate, a little more to it.
Yeah.
So you could require that, and maybe we come back and say, okay, you need to pay ten million dollars, because you're gonna destroy that road every six months.
So they would know ahead of time?
Yeah, I would see, I would see the three-part process, so they come in with their traffic study that says we're gonna have X amount of trucks going on this road, the head of public works, public works director then says, okay, that's probably likely to cause some trouble because of X, because of X, Y, and Z. So the board then requires them to do an engineering impact study, where an engineer comes in and says, yeah, that means the road would deteriorate at a certain point. So then the board would then require a. Require some kind of agreement with the operator to say, well, in that case, you, there's some agreement that you pay, you maybe just pay X amount of dollars for that impact. Maybe not the full amount, but what, you know, to be negotiated at the time.
If the impact turns out to be worse, then that's tough that it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the, the board, you know, the town will be making a comparison of best available, available information that is required to. Uh, probably to get in touch.
It's very common as well, when you're looking at a site plan, off-site improvements. It's not a dollar, a dollar amount necessarily, but they need to be required to make improvements to intersections or, you know, whatever. Yeah, no, 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 and I agree, especially if you're doing like developments or big, huge corporations, but when you're doing a mom-and-pop frickin' gravel pit, this is making it unattainable. Like a hundred percent. Making an ordinance. Which I know is.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, this, this happens scale of the operating, you, you probably saw on the news, Poland Springs.
Yeah, no, what?
Well, this was a couple of years ago, Poland Springs had a case where they were absolutely devastating this road, because they were pulling whole tanker trucks down this road. It was never designed for tanker trucks. So they destroyed it, of course, so they got, you know, again, there's an ordinance like this in there, in their ordinance now for that exact reason. So because they had to go sue the property owner and say, you guys destroyed this road with your trucks, it's been in for eight years, it's had no damage. You came in and one year completely devastated the road, we fixed it, and then you devastated it again, because it wasn't designed for those tanker trucks to drive that many. Um, so that's kind of the, the point is, not all of the roads in the town are built for the same standards. If it's a small dead-end residential road, that's a very different standard than, you know, a road that is a feeder road to other state routes.
Yeah.
Or state mine belt. Well, just. I've had possible layers. They are attempted to be expedited at some.
Say three. I think I'm gonna call an end to the meeting for tonight. Thank you, everyone, it's a little chaotic, but.
I'm gonna email everyone more information about the accessory home unit, like, there's some parts that I have, and I'll post those to you, if you want to. In advance of the next meeting, and I would just ask if you could. That will be the descriptions of the housing. Time-wise, ahead of when we might look at this ordinance again, because our deadline is at the end of the calendar year, so.
Right.
And when's on there?
Don't we, will you share the, the, all those edits that those? That group of folks, uh, seems good.
Right, we'll need to, yeah, we'll need to really. Go over what they said. So.